Good afternoon. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Your.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
Since we've had so many tree issues right now, we decided to give you a couple of reports this afternoon. On June 29th, Fargo was hit by a storm with winds of excess 80 miles per hour. As a result, high volumes of branches have been placed on the curb in many areas of the city. The forestry division, street department, and contracted staff continue to work extended days for more than 776 man-hours to date. Crews have made 5,471 stops, averaging 683 per day. The event produced 97 necessary tree removals and a collection of more than 200 tons of wood chips and brush. Normal operation wood chip disposal is at the landfill or compost site. However, the city is extremely fortunate for our partners at the Fargo Park District Fargo Public Schools, the Fargo Dome, for providing a temporary wood chip storage location. This helps ensure that the chipping crews remain focused on collecting tree debris as soon as possible. The forestry staff will soon be conducting a post-event review to identify additional tree, uh, street tree needs such as pruning. Brush collection occurs, as always, on every recycling day. However, the crews are behind schedule but are progressing as quickly and safely and efficiently as possible. The public's continued patience is appreciated. And I got a couple of calls and emails on this, but I think people have to understand that was a heck of a storm that knocked out a lot of trees. And our team, Scott, are doing a great job, and guys are all working real hard, but it's just like snow removal. It takes time to get rid of all the trees that are out there. And, uh, we have to do it safely and do it in the best manner, but everybody's working hard at it. So if you have a few dead trees still in your area, so we'll get to them. Probably done in the next two to three weeks, or what?
Hopefully, yeah. End of July.
Yeah, just in time for WeFest, right? Get done by April 1st, August 1st? Yeah? Good. Inspections. Inspection has debuted its, uh, debuted at its new inspection software to the public. It made it easy for you to go online, get your permit from start to finish. Citizens and contractors can go online to begin a permit request, request an inspection, submit resident plans online, and interact with plan reviewers and pay fees with a credit card. We're looking forward to helping citizens and contractors use our new online tools to accomplish plan review and permitting needs. And that has been going well, we take it? No problems there? Good. Now, the Fargo Public Library, although we have sites that they go to, they also do outreach, and they went to the Red River Market on June 13th at 93 degrees out. More than 750 people stopped by the library to find out more about the public library. Many of them got cards and gotten, uh, issued a, uh, library pass. So that's got good outreach, even when it's hot like that. I'm glad to see that. And Ty went there just to have some fun as well. The Fargo-Cast Public Health and Fargo Police Substation Building in South Fargo is about to look a lot more colorful and welcoming. A Miami-based artist has been commissioned to paint a mural with collaboration of the Fargo Police and North High Student, Art Students. The mural entitled Unity is being spearheaded by the Community Trust Officer Michael Bloom and muralist Alex Lopez, who specializes in topography and graphic design. The mural will celebrate youth unity, community, and portrays an officer, kids, and inspirational messages. The public is invited to watch the artists and students at work on the Unity and Mural Grillout on Monday, July 22nd, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. in the parking lot of Fargo-Cast Public Health. You can get burgers and brats, and $5 donation would be great for this, to help this happen. So make that, uh, something on your calendar. The City of Fargo is recognized, uh, as one of the top 10 best-run cities in the United States for 2019 in a study just conducted by Wally Hub. Additionally, Fargo's quality of city services rank as the top sixth in the top of 150 populated cities in the nation. Fargo excelled in multiple categories, earning top 10 distinctions for its educational opportunities and its economy. Also, Wally Hub also named Fargo as one of the sixth happiest cities in, in the nation to live in. So we're happy, and we've got an efficient city. Tonight is the debut, uh, debut of the new campaign to showcase the members of Team Fargo and the work being done each day by these dedicated employees, with the focus tonight on the city department is on Fargo Solid Waste Department. This campaign, titled "We Work For You," begins tonight with Fargo's Solid Waste Department, and will be enjoyed on social media with our public access, access channels and across parent media. We hope you enjoy behind-the-scenes look at your city in action.
As the Solid Waste Division, we offer waste handling, recycling, and landfill services for the City of Fargo. As part of the waste handling services, we offer weekly garbage collection for approximately 25,000 single-family residents. We also offer commercial garbage hauling on a daily and weekly basis to about 1,000 businesses and restaurants and bars and institutions. And then we also offer a roll-off service, which we bring out a 20- or 30-yard container and roll it off, and then come and pick that back up when it's full. That's usually used in the construction industry. The City of Fargo has one of the only urban landfills in the region. I think the unique thing that the City of Fargo has done, we began capturing and harvesting that landfill gas and incorporating it into a renewable energy program.
Fargo landfill, I guess the trucks would enter up to the landfill off of 7th Avenue North, and they'd pull onto the scale. The scale operator would weigh them and, uh, tell them where to unload, depending on what he has to get rid of. The truck would go up to the unloading area, either up to the municipal solid waste dumping area, the inert site, or the tree site. Unload, go back, stop on the scale on the way out, and they'll pay or assign their charge ticket there. Landfill gas, it's created from the deteriorating garbage. Creates methane. The gases that are in the landfill are 60% methane and 35% carbon dioxide, and then the rest are just balance gases. We take that landfill gas, we like to pull the gas in, because that way the gas is not escaping into the atmosphere, creating orders for around the city. So we'll bring that gas into the gas plant. From there, it'll go through a processing system where about half of it will be sent off to Cargill in West Fargo, which is about a mile and a half away. The other half, it'll go through a different process where it's, that gas can either be put into a natural gas pipeline, or it can be used to run certain things like trucks and buses. Or we have 920 KW generator here that will run off that gas, and that generator will produce enough electricity for 700 homes. That electricity is all sold back to be put on the grid. Right now, we're under new construction for rebuilding our current gas plant, and we're building it up so we can produce half our gas to be natural gas quality. We can also flare it off. The good gas goes up towards our generator and towards our baler building, which is heated by landfill gas. The future plans are looking into is, is maybe someday putting in a fueling station and fueling trucks and buses to run off of landfill gas, just as a renewable energy source. And again, it's all to keep this gas being pulled into the landfill and not escaping into the atmosphere.
We try and hire good, quality people, and we try and provide them with the highest-quality equipment, and then incorporate the most emerging technologies. So that led us to our variable-rate automated garbage collection program for residents. Now, in the next year or two, we're gonna go to what's called a, a route optimization software for our trucks, and so that the drivers can communicate more directly than with our office staff in changing daily operations.
We just hop in our trucks and put a smile on our face and a good attitude, and run out and pick up garbage, put it in the truck, and haul it to the landfill. The city has wisely rerouted the routes, so we are heavy on Mondays and Tuesdays. That means we're working at full capacity, getting as many houses on as possible. And we have a little free board on Thursdays and Fridays to make room for the expansion of the city, so that we can then collect those Thursday and Friday houses that have been recently added. Garbage collection is important in any city. We have to get the refuse away from the houses and to the landfill. Nobody wants to haul it on their own. I tell you what, we get an immense amount of cooperation from the city people. It seems like they look out for us. They know we've got kind of a tough job. It's not the most glamorous job in the world. I love it. We deal with everything on a personal basis, one at a time, and we all want to be happy and go home healthy and safe at the end of the day.
I think the thing that makes me the most proud to be involved with the Solid Waste Division, uh, of the staff. We offer services 365 days a year, and I'm just proud of our staff, the way that they embrace that and take that on as a challenge.
Gary, you wanna stand up so people know who you are? Nice job. Commissioner's rarely get a complaint about garbage, so thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda and moving item 3 to the Consent Agenda, to the Regular Agenda and withdrawing item 8 from the Consent Agenda and adding a construction update to the end of the Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 1st, 2019 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes is approved. Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda 1, 2, 30 excluding item number 3, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda and item 8, which has been withdrawn? Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
I'm.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Regular Agenda, item number 1. Commissioner Gerg, I'd like to discuss commissioners' cost of living increases.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, in the packet there, I put my first paycheck, and then, uh, the pay on the second one is what I'm getting paid today. And you'll note, there's, there's about a 10% increase, which equals out to about $2,300, give or take, which is an extra month's pay from my first year being a commissioner to my last year. And, and I just, I looked at my paycheck and thought, I don't remember ever voting to give us a pay increase. So what I, what I delved into and what I asked Bruce to look at was if we're getting COLAs with the employees, and sure enough, that's what's happening. So basically, for people who don't know, uh, every, every year, every budget cycle, we, we look at the employees' pay and try to bring them to, uh, an equal, uh, equalization point, uh, for cost of living. That, that pay increase of 1, 2, 3% has been now applied to the commission. I think it's always been that way. I just hadn't, hadn't realized it yet. And I'm sure that most of us up here probably hadn't realized it, uh, either. So what I'm asking is that we, uh, make it so that it's a more transparent process. If we, as commissioners, don't believe that we're being paid enough, we ask residents of Fargo to say, hey, uh, we are making $25,000 this year, we want to make $25,500 next year, and so forth for, for the, uh, time going forward. Um, I believe that we, we are not regular employees, we're not hired, uh, the regular way, um, and we're not here to make a living wage. We are here as civil servants, uh, we are, we are elected officials, um, and as elected officials, it's up to us to, to tell or ask the people of Fargo, uh, if we, if we need to get a pay increase. Um, that's how, I think, most government officials work. Um, so I want a more transparent process. I want this to be a standalone vote for the people of Fargo to, to hear the debate, uh, and if we're getting a, a pay increase or not. And I also want to remove any kind of conflict of interest. When we look at a COLA increase for employees, we do it out of, in good faith, to bring them up to the level where they need to be at, um, uh, as far as their pay goes. I, I don't think that it was the intent of anyone here to slip in, uh, an increase for us as well, but that is what, what is basically happening. So I've asked Eric Johnson, our city attorney, to draft language. I don't see it in the packet here, Eric, but if you could maybe give a little, do you have it in front of you at all, or?
Yeah, sure.
Just, uh, the language is pretty basic, and basically asks that we do a standalone vote if we want any more pay increases.
Yeah, the, the current ordinance and, and state law addresses this as well, but the current ordinance has a provision in there that, uh, that indicates that salary of the city commission and the mayor will be set through the budget process. So, yeah, Commissioner Gerg just asked me to put together some language, um, which I provided to him, uh, basically saying the monthly salary of the city commission shall be the same, um, that, uh, in other words, each city commissioner's salary would be the same, or the monthly salary of the mayor should be higher, may be higher than that of the city commissioner's. Monthly salary, uh, would be fixed by ordinance without any provision for automatic increase or other adjustment, and any subsequent increase or other adjustment in such salaries would be approved by ordinance. So essentially, it's what Commissioner Gerg is suggesting, is that if you wanted to have language like this, uh, again, I've dra, put together some draft language, but it simply says that salaries of city commissioners and mayor set especially by ordinance without an automatic COLA.
So my, my motion would be to have that draft language be moved in, into, uh, in ordinance, and we would vote on that at the coming meetings.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion does not advance, because there's not a second. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I know typically you should have a, a second to discuss a topic, but I'm going to take a little liberty here for a moment. I had eight years on the school board, and, and I can say this, there's no issue more contentious than when you come around to annually visiting your own wages and salaries as elected officials, and they're required by statute to do so. I led the effort after, into my seventh final year, my eighth final year at the school board, to, to do what others do, and that is to de-politicize the wages process, uh, because it's so ugly when, when you get into that discussion and you're opening up this, this, this communication in the public where, where people just unleash on you, telling you, you're not worth it. And, and who do you think you are, setting your own wages, and, and why do you get an increase? You know, it's just everything in the book. So I, I championed for a moment, and then they, they re-reached, revisited that in the next term and went back to a fixed salary where every annual budget session, the school board has to go and, and, uh, make the case again for wages. And I can understand your position, Commissioner Gerg. I think we all knew our, our status when we ran. Um, we all know it's a COLA, that it's an increase that is the same as the employees. I would not want to go to that path where we have that contentiousness, that, and, and that public, that politicized approach to wages from, from the public. I, I think it, it's clearer and cleaner to have it where you just simply build in the cost of living increase that your, all of your staff get. And, and yet, I can appreciate your concern completely. And I know there's public out there that think a lot of people are overpaid, um, but that's just, I'm not in that camp. And I think when you have a, one last comment, when you have board, uh, members, they should be compensated. You know, this is not a, a job people just put a couple hours a week into. You know, this, this is a really pretty major commitment. Of course, we run knowing we're going to do that, but you also don't want to be underpaying or not paying your board of directors when you have tens and hundreds of millions of dollar budgets you're dealing with.
Commissioner Grinberg, you want to make a comment?
Well, just a comment, or a point and a comment, full disclosure, I didn't know what a city commissioner made until after I was elected in my first meeting with Kimber. She outlined all the benefits and things as an elected official. Um, not sure on the exact dates, and, but the legislature, um, it, over at least a decade ago, maybe 15 years ago, Republicans and Democrats came together and, to Commissioner Strand's point, de-politicized legislative pay. And so at that time, they made it reflective of the state employee pay raises. And today, that's still a common practice. Budget times of the state have been pretty tough, but the legislature got a small bump this session because state employees had a pay raise. And so the only difference there is that whatever that calculation, that formula used is then appropriated in line of a legislative council budget for the legislature. So that was the goal back, again, 10 or 15 years ago, to de-politicize pay raises for elected officials, and, and I think the same kind of logic probably applies here.
Move on, public hearings. Item number 32A, transfer Class A alcoholic beverage license of Firebox, uh, to an international African restaurant and nightclub, uh, Doing Businesses International Africa Restaurant and nightclub at 4554 7th Avenue South. Denial recommended by Liquor Control Board, continued to the 7-1 Regular Meeting. Is there a motion to continue the hearing to July 29th, 2019?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Yes. Renaissance Zone Project for Clark Equipment Company for a commercial lease project located at 118 Broadway North to be continued from the 7-1-19th Regular Meeting. Explanation by Nicole Cutfield.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, so this item is for, uh, Clark Equipment Company, Project 282F. And they are proposing a leased commercial space located at 118 Broadway North. That's the Black Building. Uh, the project application does meet all the state and local requirements for approval. A, um, lease does not need to go in front of the Renaissance Zone Authority. It's, um, held at the administrative level. And in this particular project, they're going to be leasing 13, approximately 13,000 square feet, and looking to occupy the space by September 2019. It should be noted that the, the leasing has to be leasing a project that's been approved by the Renaissance Zone, um, and, uh, authority and, um, of the approved project. The DFI Black Building, which is, um, Renaissance Zone Number 253F, was approved by the City Commission in December 2016. However, the state has not provided final approval because the construction isn't quite complete. We expect that completion of the Black Building to be, um, completed here very soon. They're about 95% complete, and, um, uh, so we have that as a disclaimer, or if you will, or condition in the recommendation for approval tonight.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone project? You would come to this podium over here.
So, uh, my name's Nathan Gamer, uh, representing Bobcat Dusan, um, and really just here if there's any questions, uh, from the board, I can freely answer. Not exactly familiar with, uh, this process.
Well, I think it'd be important that you guys searched nationally and internationally where to put the software team that you're putting in there, right? And I think the, the commissioners would like to hear why you chose downtown Fargo as well, the different places you could've gone.
Yeah, it's, uh, obviously, uh, we're owned by Dusan, um, and it's a constant, um, you know, uh, struggle to really find valued employees, right? And that's one thing. I know our employees here, we're, every day, you know, we, we speak to executive directors, you know, and why, why Fargo? Why Gwinner? Why West Fargo, right? And the value of the work, um, I think is there. Um, you know, we, we are North America-bound, we've got other locations. Um, I think the value we saw, um, in downtown West Fargo, not only the proximity and the North Dakota relationship, our relationship with NDSU, where a number of our engineering, um, comes from, as well as the local, um, colleges in, in the area. We saw the value of the entrepreneurship downtown, um, and what downtown is, how it's growing. And really, what we were trying to strive with this, this facility is really, uh, you know, more of a new business. It's kind of our digital innovation, technical development, software engineering. Our student development program's also gonna be located downtown. So it's really, um, I wouldn't say, we're not asking for, it's not headcount add, because we, we take those headcounts as, as of West Fargo, it's project-based. So there's these projects that we identify, you know, we're pulling people from, you know, our Bismarck, West Fargo, Gwinner operations to, to work downtown and kind of grow that new product, whether it's telematics-related, digital app development, things like that. So that's really what this space is, and I think it's valuable to Fargo, just, and the Black Building. You know, we're gonna be a, a key tenant in the Black Building. I think it helps drive other, other excitement.
You turn out to be an anchor for that building, that's what we're really excited about. Commissioner Grinberg?
Thank you. I just, um, you were an anchor in the Research Park with students and entrepreneurship. Is this facility, this team is moving from the Research Park then to downtown?
It is, it is, yep.
So it's a transfer of already, what's existing to some degree from the?
Correct, some, it, and we've been looking at, how do we, uh, because we actually, we're, we're gonna remodel, you know, extensively at the Research Park. Um, when we, when we talked to, uh, I was kind of, from the sourcing perspective and listening to, to my customer, our customer internally, you know, they're looking for that excitement, that growth, um, kind of when you compare to, you know, why not do this in, in California? Because that's essentially what it is, joint ventures, things like that. And that's a lot of the, the, the drives and the technology and things that we're, we're gonna be developing here in Fargo, you know, are coming from, from those other locations. So, um, yeah, just the, the, I, I think the excitement, the create, you know, downtown, the entrepreneurship, being able to expend on that. Um, you know, I, I would say we want that startup entrepreneur spiritship, but we're, we're a large company too, right? We want to attract that startup talent, if you will. Being, we're not necessarily a startup, but we want to attract that talent. So we thought the best, um, we could still value our partnership with NDSU in downtown. They've got downtown presence, they're growing downtown as well, so we felt we could keep that and kind of have best of both worlds, if you will. That doesn't say we don't have opportunity to go to work with. I've met with, um, the new director, now I, I blanked his name at, uh, the NDSU Research Park, but I think there's, there's excitement there, what they're gonna kind of move forward and change, um, at that site, and that doesn't, that doesn't mean that we, we don't have other opportunities to move into that space again. It just might be different than what we were trying to do downtown, so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this Renaissance Zone? Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Gerg?
I just want to make a quick point, that of all the great explanation you gave for why you're moving downtown and, and why you're staying here in Fargo, none of it was because of incentive.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Oh.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 continuances, so I've asked if we can group them together. One is the Renaissance Zone, uh, project for Great Plains Holding. Great Plains Holding twice, uh, one on MP Avenue, uh, one for Great Plains Antique Holding, one is an application by the Kessler Company, and then a right-of-way Valley Vacation. If it's okay with the commission, I'd ask for a motion to continue all of these.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I think you all understand what it is. We're not doing any public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item H, annexation of property located at Northeast Quarter, Section 11, Township 138 North Range, 49 West on 5th Principal Medien, containing 171.972 acres, more or less, first reading of annexation ordinance.
Good evening, commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next three items. Your packets for all of these cases include an ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Item 34H, as the mayor has stated, is an annexation of an area here that is, locate this here, south of 64th Avenue South. Davies High School is down here. This is County Drain 53, this is the Golden Valley additions here, this is I-29 here. So it, uh, it, this land is largely undeveloped. This is a, an older photo here, this actually is being farmed today. We'll just see in the next photographs. I, I'm a city kid who doesn't recognize growing crops very well, but I think it's soybeans. So, uh, just a location here, uh, the, on a property this large, the aerial is the appropriate photograph for it, but here's just, uh, looking down 64th Avenue, which we continued, uh, the interstate, as you see, is down there. And Drain 53 here, as you see, is a rather large drain. It is a two, uh, two culverts here, taking it under 64th Avenue, which is still here as a dirt road. And then this picture, which turned out a little dark, uh, because there's about a 30-minute time difference between these two pictures and this one, and the clouds were coming over. This is just looking at the, uh, about southeast, I'm standing on the interstate shoulder here, looking southeast at the property there. For the annexation, uh, this date was set, the July 15th, was set to confirm the petition for the location the mayor has stated. The petition for annexation was brought forward by the landowner, as opposed to being a city-initiated annexation, was brought forward by the landowner. The property is proposed to be developed as a residential and commercial development on the south side of 64th Avenue, east of I-90, uh, 29. The boundaries of the annexation and the corresponding legal description are included in your staff report and packet. The proposed residential and commercial development is entitled Selkirk Place First Edition, which is the next item on tonight's agenda, gentlemen. The, uh, the applicant's representative, Scott Carey, of RS Carey Land Company, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant's representative, Scott Carey of RS Carey Land Company, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. Note that for annexations, the planning commission's review of it, they don't hold a hearing like they would on a normal plat. They do a review to confirm that the proposed annexation is consistent with the applicable land use plan, and this is also indicated in your staff report. Annexation, the regulations for annexation come out of the Century Code, it's not something that's in RLDC. So this concludes the staff's presentation, commissioners, thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this annexation? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Donald, they're not here today? You don't think they're here?
Oh, no, the applicant, Mr., Mr. Carey is here.
Did want to speak, okay. Close public hearing, do I have a motion?
Move for approval?
There a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm, I'm just curious, I'm, I'm going to ask a question, so that I've asked it. To my knowledge, this is the second annexation I've seen in South Fargo in my three-plus years here, and I, and I wrestled with the first vote, and this time around, I, I decided I'm going to ask my questions more proactively. We've had a lot of pushback from the public out there when we aren't yet firm with the diversion plan. And the notion of us growing the footprint for development in a floodplain, I, I'd like to have us address that question. Why is it, or how is it, we can, and, and we have no guarantee the diversion will still come through, we hope it does, we expect it will. Can somebody just help me understand that question of what, what, what the justification is for advancing annexation in a floodplain when the flood protection isn't yet firmed up and in place?
All South Fargo's a floodplain, John, so we have to bring to floodplain proofing is what we have to do. So they have to loomer out the land and they have to build floodproof basements. And the protection is south of that right now, in emergency, we, emergency protects south of that. So you can have continued growth in those areas until that, that's not done.
I think Commissioner Grinberg, you're talking about later, once we're starting to build, we might change some of our unplanning and plating, we might do some things a little bit different when we have permanent protection.
I think that would be the ultimate...
But right now, we don't change the rules, so if you build north of south, north of 64, or south of 64, you have the same rules everybody else has. So you're just running out of areas to grow right now, and that's, you're just doing the next available section is what you're building. We're not doing fringe where we go two or three miles south, we're not doing any of that type of growth. So it's usually what's close to our infrastructure that we continue to grow, but they still have to do all the protections that we normally would do for building in a floodplain, which everybody's in. Is that...
Doesn't, I, I needed to ask that.
No, that's fine. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item I, zoning change from agricultural and general commercial to single-dwelling residential, SR4, single-dwelling residential and general commercial, public and institutional, circ, uh, circly place first edition, 2816, 2886, 2896, 2890, 3006, and 3340, 64th Avenue South. Approval recommended by the planning commission, first reading of the rezoning ordinance and the plat of the Selkirk Place First Edition. Donald Crest to explain.
Thank you, sir. As the mayor stated, this is the Selkirk Place First Edition, so we're picking up on the annexation your commission approved just a few moments ago. So this would be the larger annexed area here, and then the black outline in this graphic here is the actual plat. So the annexation area was 171.9 acres, the actual platted area in this phase of the plat is 87.8 acres, it includes a little bit extra stuff over here and in here. The photographs are the same, so I didn't put them back in there. The property is actually, there's two zonings on it this time. The west half is zoned GC, general commercial, and the east half is zoned ag. This GC zoning was done in 2008, but no commercial development has taken place on it. It's, you know, as you saw, it's the, it's the soybean field there. The proposal is to change the zoning of these two zonings to SR2 and SR4 for single-family development. One lot will retain the GC, general commercial zoning, and remainder will be zoned public and institutional. We'll take a look at this graphic here, just to give you an idea. These lots here are zoned SR4, the developer indicates they might be further subdivided in the future into townhome lots. This is the large, single-family area, and then here is a, a future fire station. As noted in your staff report, there are still some negotiations going on between the city and the property owner regarding the fire station there. This is right-of-way, again, we know there'll be the overpass there. This is going to retain the general commercial. And then this area along the drain here is area of drain, levee, detention basin, and a little area down here which may become part of the Fargo Park District. It's just, this, when Golden Valley was created over here, this piece was not in the city. So, you know, just to finish off the park there. The PI lots, which are, again, all be government-owned, would be not available for development, of course, those are dedicated for various uses, as indicated here. The plat here is slightly different than the one in your packet, there was an easement shown across the, the drain property here, at the negotiation with the drain board and the applicant, that was taken off this plat, that'll be done by separate document, but essentially the same. Again, here we see the, the plat, and the lots and their zonings are enumerated in the chart in your staff report, a little close-up view there, with some street names. And this is the conceptual master plan of the full area, so the part being platted right now is here. And then this is conceptual, you are not voting on this tonight, you're not, not like a PUD where you're holding them to it, but just an idea what it's going to look at, the big connection here will be 67th Avenue, which will tie into 31st Street and then continue across, and then 67th Avenue, of course, continue across the drain, this area here, some configuration and hook up with the existing 67th there on the other side of 25th Avenue. Again, the applicant's representative, Mr. Scott Carey of RS Carey Land Company, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen, this concludes staff's presentation, thank you, commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? Seeing none, will you close public hearing, do I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
No.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item J, zoning change AG agriculture to single-dwelling residential, SR5, single-dwelling residential, Madelins Meadows Second Edition. Approval recommended by the planning commission, 35, first reading rezoning ordinance, and a plat of Madelins Meadows Second Edition.
Thank you, Mayor.
Don, to Crest to explain.
So we're, we're going diagonal from where we were just a few minutes ago, that, that plat is, is, is right here, the annexation area we looked at is right there. So this is the Madelins Meadows Second Edition, your commission approved the Madelins Meadows First Edition just on the west side of 25th Street South, just about a year ago, in June of 2018. So this, in that original plat, was a, a large lot, this was Lot 9, Block 3, which was zoned ag at the time and was intended for future development in a second phase, and that has come forward at this time. Here's a couple of photographs from this morning, this, you're just looking here along 73rd from 25th Street there, this earthwork is preparation for Madelins Meadows First Edition, and the second edition is beyond there a little bit. The zoning here is, again, ag, and the proposal is to zone to SR4 for one, for most blocks and SR5 for one block, you'll see the difference in just a moment here. Here's the plats of the existing Madelins Meadows First Edition is here. These four blocks here will be zoned SR4. This block here with a, a little different configuration and an alley here would be zoned SR5 to have the smaller lot sizes. Again, here, 73rd, 30th Avenue, 30th Street, and 72nd Avenue were dedicated on the previous plat, so they are not depicted on this plat, other than in shadow. The applicant's representative, John Eunice of Sitka Investments Eagle Bridge Development, is with us tonight and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen, this concludes staff's presentation, commissioners, thank you.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, close public hearing, do I have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Don. Item 33, request renewal plan and development agreement for project located northeast of University Drive and 11th Avenue North. Jim Gilmore to explain.
This is the ROARs and development that would be adjacent to the new Newman Center. You had originally heard this request on April 22nd, had been then delayed for a month, and then was referred to the Tax Exempt Review Committee on May 20th to evaluate whether or not there was a financial necessity for this project, as well as how large any tax increment financing district would be. The ROARs development would be located on lots 2 and 3, I've shown on the attachment and the screen, the, basically, the two lots on the right-hand side of the screen. The project would demolish existing structures on those properties and construct a 85-unit apartment building and seven townhomes. The schedule would be for the demolition to begin this fall, and for new construction to be completed in July of 2021, two years from now. The developers requesting $950,000 of assistance to pay for demolition, site acquisition, and city utilities would have to be, go with the proper, or go with the development. The, the $950,000, there'd also be a 5% fee paid to the city, that would be recovered with TIF funds, as well as interest over a 10-year period. Our estimate of the annual TIF revenue would be $123,000 a year. The Tax Exempt Review Committee recommends, and it financially seems to model out, that this would be a 10-year incentive. The Tax Exempt Review Committee, we talked about, you know, the size of the TIF district, and the recommendation is to have a TIF district that would just be exclusive to lots 2 and 3. I think it's important to note that the faith-based housing would then be outside of the TIF district, and a developer would not benefit from any tax revenue from that, nor would the Catholic Church benefit from this particular TIF district. ROAR's request was sent to PFM, our financial advisor, and they concluded that the project would not be feasible without this public assistance. The next steps are noted in the motion, would be to direct the staff and the city attorney to prepare a renewal plan and development agreement for consideration in a future public hearing, with that TIF size limited to lots 2 and 3. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Gilmore?
Yeah, maybe, I, I was present with the joint meeting of the Tax Exempt Review Committee in the Renaissance Zone, and fully aware of the great work the Tax Exempt Review Committee did, and they shared kind of my perspectives at that meeting, as well as other meetings we've had with the Roosevelt Neighborhood. So if you might just give an overview of option one, as you shared, I believe it's the Tax Exempt Committee that they chose not to accept, but you, you shared as another addition maybe to this decision we'll make tonight.
You know, the other option would be to have the TIF district itself be larger and include the faith-based housing, that would be a portion of what is on Lot 1. We had done some projections and indicated that, in not really knowing with the assessor how much that would be valued at, but if we assumed it would be $100,000 per housing unit, that would generate about $25,000 a year in TIF revenue, as far as what's increased over what's being generated today, so over 10 years, that could be, you know, $250,000. That could vary depending on how the city assessor actually values the property, it could be that this won't be that high, it could be a little bit higher, I just, unless the assessor actually sees the plans, he can't give me a, a real firm estimate, so. That money, then, we could create a larger renewal area, and I suggested we could, some of the eligible activities with the TIF funds would be acquisition, demolition of property, and so we could look at it, for any dilapidated homes in the Roosevelt Neighborhood, and use those funds to acquire and demolish those properties. Those properties could then be, you know, sold for development, could be Habitat for Humanity, it could be one of our high school builds, it could be a land trust, it could be a variety of things.
So, yeah, if I may add, Chair, and the memo that Jim provided me, the options for TIF activities would be, as outlined in his memo on July 8th, high school build, Habitat for Humanity, perhaps purchasing other lots and dedicating them to the land trust that's been in discussion for some time. There's three options. So I'd like to ask, I know there's been a fair amount of discussion about moving these houses, or two, one or two or three of them, I don't know if there's somebody from the Roosevelt Neighborhood would like to provide a short update on that effort, as well as maybe Mr. Nygaard, on what is, anything that's come from those discussions?
Kenny Nixon, Roosevelt Neighborhood. Yeah, so to your question, there has been some discussion between representatives from the Roosevelt Neighborhood and Diocese and ROARs as far as the possibility of identifying some houses. And, you know, essentially, our hope is, and contrary to the, kind of the common narrative that's been on this block, is that, that most of these houses are beyond saving, that's not the case. So, you know, there's been, I believe, two houses already that have been identified, one to be sold to another entity and moved, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, Larry and Earl. And then there's another one that the Diocese is looking at salvaging as well. Jim met with them last week, I believe, and what, really did some touring, and we appreciated the, your willingness to let us do that, of several other houses, and I think we, we see at least three other houses that could clearly be moved and salvaged. And so what we're, you know, I think what we're hoping is for some allocation of the TIF money, if that's the route we're going to go with this, to helping, you know, identify lots that could be acquired, and if some way, and I don't know that the TIF could do this based on the stipulations that Jim has communicated to us, but somehow help with the, the cost of moving. I mean, there, there's some definite needs here that need to be upfront, as far as the moving of the homes, potentially parking them if necessary, because communication that we've had with the city is that there's no lots available at this time in the Roosevelt area that they could just quickly move. So there's that, purchasing the lots, which the TIF could do, the TIF money could do, and then just some of the help with connections as far as electrician, electricity and plumbing and, and those kind of things. I mean, clearly, we, we as citizens do not have the kind of funding to come forward and say, okay, we're going to do this, we need some help, and we'd love to see a, a public-private partnership, you know, with the other entities if possible. We had discussed this early on, or I should say, middle way, as we were finalizing some of the negotiations, and, and it was indicated to us there was some, definitely some interest in helping us salvage some of these homes. We didn't talk numbers with ROARs or the Diocese, but it would be nice to see a, a good faith effort towards salvaging some more of these homes and getting them relocated into our neighborhood.
But Ken, those homes have been up for sale for a year now, we've had no interest in them, we've only got two homes that does that. Jim has a lot, I know, that's available, could we not move it to his lot?
It's a possibility.
So, I mean, I think we have to look, the city doesn't own any lots right now. I think we talked to us, Commissioner Strand and Commissioner Grinberg, we're willing to look at that, but they're going to go into tearing down this area and start building this fall. So there's a variety of organizations, Habitat for Humanity, different groups that might help us do that. City doesn't normally buy and sell houses unless it's for bike or whatever, but we're more than happy to look at that, if we could salvage some of our homes. I think with Gary Goises and their flood protection, we've always tried to buy a home and move it. So we don't have any objection to that, if it can be found a way to do that. So far, it appears the private sector hasn't stepped up. So if we can do something with the land trust and do some things and look at it, I would just say, in fairness to the developer, we could probably figure this out the next 30 days and figure out what's going to happen. It may take a while to get all that pulled together.
Yeah.
But I think if that would meet your needs, I think, I don't know that the commissioners would object to that if we could get this answered.
Right, and we recognize the time crunch here, I, I think, you know, Jim has really worked hard to approach a number of different organizations like Habitat. I think that, from their standpoint, they weren't in a, in a position to, to really move on this themselves, or at least that's the understanding I have. So, yeah, clearly, you know, it's not like we've been just sitting and waiting for this, but, you know, it's been a slow process, and we've also been in communication with the city on a, a number of times, seeking their help as far as identifying locations. So, you know, it's, it is an area that we would really love to see.
Yeah, the other question I'd have for you, one time you heard is, and Matt didn't voted against a TIF for the, this project, now are you in favor of the TIF, it's utilized this way?
So, yeah, I want to give a little context to that, you know, there was, I think, some discomfort with what was presented to us initially at that meeting, that really didn't provide any real details. So we didn't know what we were purchasing, if you will. And also, I think, to be blunt, our understanding was from what the, the public comments from Larry, was that if the TIF didn't go through, the project wouldn't go through, and I think we made a calculation, partially, that, okay, well, this might be an opportunity for us to see them go back to the drawing board and look at something at much less density. So, you know, put my cards down on the table. That's what we were hoping for. So, given that, I think we recognize that the TIF is probably going to go forward, we would certainly like to see some help in preserving some of these homes.
Are there any other comments? Larry, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney and members of the Commission, Larry Nygaard. We have been working with Roosevelt Neighborhood, and I can tell you that from my standpoint and that of the Diocese, we will do whatever we can to, to save the homes if, if it's your group's, the Commission's intention that that's what we do. Certainly, we've identified three, maybe four, maybe even five homes that have got value for moving. The, the trouble we have is timing, of course. We can stage around some of these. They happen to be in the southeast corner of the site, which is probably the last area that we're going to impact. So that's a good thing, so we do have a little bit of time, but, but from an overall perspective, we'd like to see a vote on this as soon as possible so that we can continue to finish our financing and make sure that we do get in the ground this fall. But as far as the details about demolition and home moving, I think we can work around those.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions by commissioners? Commissioner Gary?
So what we've been told over here today is that if the church doesn't happen, then the Roar's project doesn't happen. If the Roar's project doesn't happen, then the church doesn't happen. And if Roar's doesn't get the incentive, then none of this is going to happen because it's one project. The church is demolished. The church is gone. We haven't voted on a TIF yet. So if, if that's the case, then you, we weren't being told the right thing, or the fix is already in, or you don't need the incentive. So I don't know what it is, but I, I live in the neighborhood, I drove past it, and it's gone. So I'm perplexed by that, and I think that is a clear indication that the but-for question is not there, and again, we should deny this. We're incentivizing more apartments in the city of Fargo. We have nine, 10, 12, 13% vacancies in some areas of Fargo, and we're going to incentivize more apartments. I don't think it's necessary. If, if the market can bear it, then the market will do that, but a million dollars in an incentive for land acquisition and other things, I don't think is required.
With all due respect, Commissioner Gary, that's a misstatement of what was represented at previous meetings. What we did say was that the, the plans could not proceed as currently proposed without a TIF. There would be a dramatic change to the plans on behalf of the Diocese were the TIF not approved, and there would be a complete stoppage of the market rate apartment side of it. So we'd have to go back to the design board and reconfigure the, the project, and that's, and that's what we've represented in the past, not that the Diocese would stop completely. The construction or the demolition, rather, that you're viewing right now is all occurring on lot one, which is not a part of this TIF project. So that's the distinction that I make in, in statements you presented tonight.
And the Diocese is here today, so I'd like to hear from them, too, to say, if the TIF didn't happen, and the church is gone, would you change your project? And would that lot sit empty for as long as it would take to reestablish this project? So, again, someone, somewhere has indicated that you're going to get the TIF up, apparently, because if that is true, you still wouldn't demolish the church and have nothing there for a year.
The church is a separate project.
It's not a separate project. It's been told repeatedly, one is, part, these are connected, literally, physically connected, literally.
So, Mr. Chairman, lot one, that's the, that's the church and the faith-based housing. Lot one, there is no TIF, correct?
As you pass it, as Tax Exempt passed.
Yeah. So there's no misinterpretation, there's no false statements, that's, they are, they are starting their construction of the, of the church because there's no TIF, there was no vote, there's nothing involved with, with any of that with us. So to try to connect that and make it into a conspiracy, after a while, you start getting tired of it.
Commissioner Grinberg?
So to add to that, in particular, Commissioner Strand, I've spent a lot of time with this project as community development and as planning, and to Commissioner Pepcorn's point, the application was put in on lot two and three, which is pure. The discussions that I have had is trying to figure out a compromise to do a little extra to help and work with the neighborhood. So that's what I'm bringing with my voice, was at the joint meeting. It's been at past meetings with leadership for the Roosevelt Neighborhood. I've had conversations with Mr. Nygaard. So that's, if you're getting the impression, Commissioner Gary, that's what I've been advocating, and I did so as well as the joint meeting between Renaissance and Tax Exempt Committee, taking it a step further beyond whether or not there's been demolishing or not. We have that right as policymakers to do this if we choose with the, you know, whatever the motions are here. So that's, that's, that's the seat I'm sitting in, and the voice I've been advocating is to try and find some common ground, be sensitive to the needs of the neighborhoods, as well as the excitement around this project to better the neighborhood, and obviously with the Diocese and, and the development.
Mr. Gary?
The point being made is this, if the TIF for lot two and three does not happen, then lot one and four does not happen, the way it's depicted, the way it's drawn today. And if it's not, if it's not happening the way it's depicted here, it's back to the drawing board, and that could be another year of this development of just figuring out how it could happen, and now there's no church. So would you demolish your home before you knew you were going to move? No, you wouldn't do that, because you have to, you have to, you're, you're programming somewhere, and now it's a lot, okay? So that's the point. The but-for question is simply not there because they've already moved forward with it, knowing they didn't need to have, to have that happen. This was going to happen one way or another, it will happen one way or another. If we deny this TIF, it will still go forward.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the but-for does apply to the application as it was submitted. I'm using, I'll use it my commission prerogative, and adding the but-for with helping the neighborhood with some of the things that have been going on, and so I'm going to test the motion here. I'm going to move that we approve this TIF as presented by Mr. Gilmore, and that that motion also includes adding the faith-based, faith-based housing, to use funds that are in four categories. One is, Mr. Gilmore outlined, high school build options, Habitat for Humanity, potential purchasing of lots and committing to the land trust, or as option one, fourth option, by September 1st, options to relocate up to three homes.
Second? Moved in second today. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the chairman of the Tax Exempt Review Committee, and we, what we passed was strictly the TIF for lots two and three, and the reason that we did that is, we were not in favor of all these potential things, because most of them are potential and hypothetical. They're all wonderful, they sound great, but it's all hypothetical. And I, and what my point was, was we should keep this as tight as possible on lots two and three, and have the TIF end as soon as possible. I think trying to make the neighborhood happy by offering them carrots, I, I don't think that's, that's a good way to do business. So I will not be supporting that motion.
Mr. Gilmore, is the TIF different in time length on any, in Commissioner Grinberg's motion? Is the length of the TIF the same?
I'm assuming it would still be 10 years unless Commissioner Grinberg indicates otherwise.
So they will be the same length of time, it's just you're adding addition to faith-based, and you have specific aspects. How much money might that be worth to the neighborhood?
In the estimate, it's $25,000 a year times 10 years, so.
250,000. And John, Commissioner Strand, would that help the land trust?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I, I believe that good faith is part of what we'd be doing here and showing an effort of, of supporting a land trust in the neighborhood, but it would, it would help the land trust to have some seed money and, and some, some funding to, to at least leverage forward. I have a question, if I might. Maybe Jim or somebody could answer this. In the, and I, and I'll join Commissioner Grinberg, we've been immensely involved with this, with the neighborhood, with the developers, with the church. Help me understand the unified project approach to this, and whether or not, because at some point, this became a unified project, I believe, as it was proposed, brought forward to us, where they were consolidated into one project, and if this project weren't funded, Jim, on the TIF on either side, would it no longer be a unified project, or what would the impact be?
I think Mr. Nygaard kind of addressed that, and for instance, if you look at the, the plans for this project, includes underground parking that would be under the market rate apartments, then continue under the faith-based housing, and I'm not sure, might even continue onto the offices. So, yeah, if you chop that off, and you're going to have to do a redesign because you're going to have it, have a different entrance. If you're going to have underground parking, maybe you have to drop it. So I don't know if I'm addressing your question, but if the market housing doesn't happen, there needs to be, you know, there needs to be a different connection or a different termination of the church project.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate, the Tax Exempt Review Committee voted unanimously just for, for lots two and three, not for any of this stuff. I have great concerns about us talking about funding a land trust. We don't even know who else is participating. I, I think we need to know, it's a great thing, great concept, but we need to know who else is in, where the money's going, who's governing it. It's just, all this stuff is all hypothetical, and that's not appropriate ways to use tax money. They're all one, they sound wonderful, it's all fine and dandy, but we got to focus on spending money wisely, and not what we can do to make people feel, feel, feel good about things. So I, once again, I oppose, we got to stick and keep it tight, and not try to use this for other, other purposes.
Any other comments? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. And Commissioner Pepcorn, I completely appreciate your, your view, and I'm on the other side of that teeter-totter. Commissioner Gary and I typically don't support some of these incentives and exemptions that the Tax Exempt Review Committee does, especially for market rate housing. So that's where I'm looking for a way to, to get there with creativity. If we were just voting on the TIF for the Roar's project only, I would be voting no. I, I, we did, as a commission, advance the concept of, of exploring a neighborhood benefit that would be an expansion of this TIF. So you have a million dollars roughly going to the Roar's project, you have a quarter million dollars over to the neighborhood. It's, it's stamp, stamp drawer change, in light of the neighborhood needs. And, and my intention is that we, 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 and I'll, and I'll qualify, I'll back up a step. The project we're looking at is maybe the fifth iteration of, of many different versions of this project, and it took the neighborhood and, and planning, all of our departments and, and developers to really get together to a point where it's something that's improved and that they could live with, and that we could go forward with and benefit the neighborhood. But bottom line, if there isn't a benefit here for the neighborhood in light of the compromises and the sacrifices they've made, I'm not in favor of the original TIF from, from Tax Exempt Review. I will expand my support of TIFs, knowing that we would throw some incentives here to the neighborhood to try, leverage some, some good change. It doesn't have to be a land trust, but if we have some seed money, if we see a lot we can develop, we see a, a parcel we can purchase, and, or a piece of blight that we can get rid of, it gives us a tool to work with, and I know at the Community Development Committee, we would appreciate that, I think the neighborhood would. So I'm in favor of the amended motion, and we'll see where that goes.
Discussion over. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
No.
Gary?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 34, request from Attorney General's Office to approve engagement with the Andres Anderson firm working on affiliation with Robbins Geller firm as legal counsel for the city in opioid lawsuit and fees proposed. Need to apologize to the Commission a little bit, I was tasked with Commissioner Strand to look into the opioid issue, and unfortunately, we came to a deadline we had to go through, and Eric protected us a little bit in what we need to go forward. It was our feeling after interviewing to the law firms that this case was getting a little bit more aggressive, and the feeling is that there may be something happening this fall, so we're coming back to file a report with the Commission, just saying, here's the rules, here's what's going on. The action that Eric took, I know he needs to obligate us, if we don't want to do this, we cannot do it, so you all have that right tonight to do that. We're just coming back with you with an option, and our, our reasoning was somewhat influenced by the fact, by the county has already filed suit with the company and is on the first tier of what happens in this particular aspect. So I'll have Eric Johnson explain it to you, and my apologies to you if we moved a little fast, but we had no choice as far as what we had to do to file, and we have talked to Attorney General's Office and made him aware that we're proceeding in some manner tonight, so he would understand that.
Eric?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. That, that sets the table very nicely. Yes, I'm here to make a recommendation to engage, sort of, you might call it National Litigation Council regarding opioid litigation. I'd given you a report a month ago at the June 17th meeting, and I tried to give a little succinct narrative about that. You know, a year and a half ago or so, the city had been approached by the same two firms we're talking about tonight, and the, the question was whether the city would initiate a lawsuit. The state also, at that time, we visited with the Attorney General's Office at that time, with the Attorney General himself, Mr. Stengem, and they were finding, you know, getting ready to file their own lawsuit, and were encouraging us to sort of, you know, get in behind them. The city and all the other subdivisions within the state would benefit from the value of that lawsuit, and at, at an executive branch level, if you will, the decision was made to, to stand behind the state in its lawsuit. And they had certain remedies that we thought would be beneficial to the entire state as well as to the city of Fargo. But unfortunately, the state lawsuit had a rather unfortunate decision that came out of Burley County District Court. It's subject to appeal to the North Dakota Supreme Court, may get overturned, and, and they may be fully back in business, but the court dismissed that lawsuit in May of 2019. And that decision, rather surprising decision and rather unfortunate, really made me, anyway, start looking at this again and deciding, where does that leave the city of Fargo? Because we were, that was going to be our, that was going to be where we obtained whatever remedy we were going to get from the opioid crisis, if one was going to be available through opioid litigation. And so, again, that's, that led up to the report I gave you a month ago. We were thinking we'd be able to go through a process, as the mayor just mentioned, at the, at the meeting a month ago. He just suggested, and during my report, that he and Commissioner Strand and myself would move forward to visit with these same two law firms that we talked to a year and a half earlier, with the intention of bringing them to you, my intention actually was bringing to you at the end of this month, at the meeting in two weeks from now. What ended up happening, we did visit with those two law firms, and the two firms, we called them Motley Rice, but they're consortiums of law firms, and the other was Robbins Geller. Visited with both of them, both very capable consortiums of lawyers, they're both very involved in the national litigation that's going on, involved in the executive committee, both of them are, and so makes it a rather difficult decision. But one thing that happened that was quite unexpected, really, was it, it seemed that there was going to be a, you know, that action was needed to be taken on the day, last Tuesday, and actually, I visited with both firms. The Motley Rice firm sort of tipped me off that there was going to be necessary to take action, and probably our interests would be preserved by filing a complaint that, today. It's a 160-page complaint, so it's a bit of an undertaking, and I visited with the other firm, and they said, whichever firm you go with, you should file a complaint, just to preserve sort of where you are in the timeline. It's kind of the way these national class action negotiations can happen, is you get put into a class depending upon whether you've got an action pending or not. We don't know whether that'll end up being the case, but it seemed prudent at that time to at least file a complaint, not take any further action. The option would be to withdraw from that complaint if we chose to do so. So I took the liberty of doing that, informed the mayor of that, and, and so that's where it stands. It's filed, it's filed under my name, I haven't, not under the names of either of these two law firms. So that was done last week. My intention was to inform you of it at this meeting, and, and get your take on, on the rest of it, which is to engage litigation council to take over representation of the city on, on that lawsuit. So with that, I have visited with the Attorney General's Office, had a lengthy conversation with them in early June, again, after this, this decision from Burley County District Court. Was assured that the Attorney General understands that we may need to make some decisions that are different than what we were making a year ago, and we might need to protect our interests by filing a separate action, and was fully understanding of that, and, and I think the Attorney General himself knows that. I've been told that he knows that and understands that. You know, I, I speak for myself, we still remain fully supportive of the state and hope they're able to overturn the decision on appeal, because I think there's some merit to the state's case there with respect to the kinds of remedies and the damages they can attain from that lawsuit. But having said that, the issue at hand is whether to proceed with this lawsuit and to engage council. Again, we've interviewed both representatives. Again, we've interviewed both representatives of both the Motley Rice firm and Robbins Geller, again, both, I think, capable groups. The Robbins Geller firm actually is sort of confining their cases to the ones they've had, and they were in association with Andres and Anderson, which is the firm we would engage, but they're closely affiliated, in the same way that Motley Rice is affiliated with the firm that actually appeared in Fargo to talk with us. Again, as the mayor mentioned, the Robbins Geller group represents Cass County and city of Grand Forks, and they've filed earlier this year a complaint virtually identical to ours, the one we just filed, the one that I just filed. And so, the belief is that there's some value to that. Not to say that we have to have the same lawyer as Cass County, but I think there is some value in aligning with Cass County, and Mayor and Commissioner Strand can speak for themselves on that as well. But in the end, that's the recommendation. Both firms were asked to present their fee agreements and their contingent fee agreements. Motley Rice's fee structure was sort of structured a higher percentage of the first million, it goes down a little bit as the amount of recovery comes in, as is noted in my letter. And the Robbins Geller, Andres Anderson fee structure was a flat fifteen percent. After I presented this on the city commission agenda, I got a call from the Motley Rice, and they said, oh, by the way, I'm authorized to offer a flat rate of ten percent. So it came a little bit afterward. I said I would communicate that to you. My recommendation is to ignore that aspect in terms of decision-making. I mean, I didn't go back to Andres and Anderson, I wasn't, didn't think their position was to be negotiating that way. We did ask Andres and Anderson if they would give us the same fee arrangement as they had offered the county, and they have in making their recommendation. So with that, I think that's basically the explanation with that. There is an issue here. There is an awful lot of activity in the multi-district litigation court, which is in Ohio. Judge Polster is overseeing it. Has been a motion made by the executive committee, again, represented by both of these firms, by the way, they have active involvement in it, where it's being proposed to have, set up a negotiating class, and the idea would be to begin negotiations with the defendants, you know, some twenty, thirty or more companies that are involved in the manufacturing and distribution of these pharmaceutical opioids. Also, with respect to the case, there's sort of a bellwether case brought by the state of Oklahoma, where two companies settled already for about three hundred and fifty million dollars, and the remaining defendants, that case is ongoing right now, and it's halted for a short time, I think, for the July fourth week, but it's resuming again today. So in any event, that's an interesting case to observe, because it's sort of one of the first cases where you get to see what a trier effect will do with all of these claims against the pharmaceutical companies.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm noticing we have Curtis Olafson in the audience here, and Curtis has been working with the Motley Rice firm and has had an immense level of communication with Fargo, with Cass County and these other cities, and want to thank you for that. When this topic first surfaced, I was not really inclined to think that our highest priorities as a government subdivision is to go be litigious and sue people. I've turned a corner on that in my sense of information and my sense of culpability of the people in the industry that have participated so willingly in their egregious behavior that just led to thousands of deaths, you know. And opioids aren't the only addiction in the world, but certainly, the damage and the harm to our community and our people is just incalculable, and we need a path forward which addresses those harms and those damages. I have, to a degree, largely let our legal counsel direct us and lead us in this, because that's not my arena, but I'm completely on board with joining up with the messaging out there that this, the damage to our people is just, you know, needs to be compensated for or addressed and rectified. And Mayor, if I might, Curtis, do you have anything you'd like to say to us? I know you've made many trips here, and this is a little unusual, but you've driven from the northern end of the valley, and you might have something for the greater good to share just briefly.
Mr. Chairman, once you give a former state senator the microphone buckle up. Before I make a formal introduction of myself, I'll just say, you of all people ought to know. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, thank you for addressing this very important issue, and I know that you have been consulting with another law firm, and I think that's good. I hope you will take action. I hope that you will see the advantages to working with the firms I represent, and they are many. And I also want to, I want to say a word about the Attorney General's lawsuit. The Attorney General is a very good friend of mine, as Senator, now Commissioner, Grinberg would know, and there was never a good reason for you as a city commission to not take action because of the Attorney General's suit. The Attorney General would be able to pursue damages incurred by the state of North Dakota, which are mainly limited to Medicaid damages. You as a city and the counties here in North Dakota have far different damages, and so pursuing a course of action to recover your damages in no way diminishes the effort of the Attorney General. It never did, and it does not now. And so, I really feel that I'm working with the group of firms that are the best in the business. They have around two hundred attorneys, eight hundred support staff, and that in light, in comparison to the Attorney General, in defense of our Attorney General, no Attorney General in the nation has the resources or the staff with the experience and the expertise to handle litigation this massive and this complex. Not, I'm not talking about just our Attorney General, there's no Attorney General in the nation that can tackle litigation this complex. So that, your recommendation from your city attorney, who, by the way, has done a masterful job of learning about this very complex issue, the recommendation that you retain outside counsel is absolutely necessary in a litigation of this magnitude. And I've been involved with this consortium of law firms for about eighteen months now, and it's been a very interesting and educational process. And Commissioner Strand, my former neighbor back home, is absolutely right, the damages done by this are incalculable, and the only way that you as a city will put in place the resources that will be needed for abatement of the problem and treatment of people with long-term addiction is by joining the litigation. I would caution you to not count on money to flow down to you from Bismarck. When it's been handled, filtered through the office of the Attorney General, and more likely, far more likely, by the legislature, things happen, and Commissioner Grinberg would be familiar with that. Anyone who is familiar with the Master Tobacco Settlement Agreement will recall how well the counties and the cities fared by hoping that money would filter down to them from Bismarck. Ten percent of the money from the Master Tobacco Settlement actually ended up in the hands of political subdivisions. So based on my experience, six years of Senate, in the Senate, and Commissioner Grinberg has far more years in the Senate, I would caution you to take your own action, be in command of your own destiny. And I think that's the most important message I bring to you. We'd love to represent the city of Fargo. The city attorney has had the discussion with our top, one of our three top attorneys that I've worked with, and so he's very well versed on that part of the issue. I think you should, as he recommended, consider the fee schedule before you, but more than that, you should consider the expertise and the depth of knowledge and the background of the law firms involved here, and I know that the firms I'm representing are second to none. So your best chance to recover the most favorable settlement is unquestionably with the firms that I represent.
Thank you.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I have Mr. Novak, who, Mr. Mayor, you've met, and has been up here for meetings. I have him ready on the phone to answer any questions that would be above my area of expertise. And some of your commissioners have not heard the presentations, and so that is why I'm here, to answer any lingering questions that invariably arise, in my experience with city commissions and county commissions, when they get to this point in the process where they are considering whether to take action or not, there are invariably questions that arise. So I'd be glad to help you with those.
Thank you.
Any discussion by commissioners? Commissioner Strand?
I move the recommended motion.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had a little concern last week about the process that was used, and, you know, this was vetted, we decided, I don't know if we had formal action over a year ago, but I liken this to our annual audits, we all go individually or with two to Ida Bailey. I'm just not comfortable, I'm not going to support the motion based on, I haven't heard anything different that gives me compelling reason to change my mind. I also spoke to the Attorney General, and, you know, part of our decision here is, in your judgment, who's going to prevail? And so I have a lot of faith in the Attorney General of North Dakota, as well as my colleague, Senator Olafson. Originally, we had a discussion, I forget what group it was, you sue for three reasons: money, you want to change society, or you're mad. And nobody's been able to give me any monetary loss that we've had as a city, other than some casual discussions with the police officers and Narcan purchase. The biggest expense is the counties, because of the human services, Medicaid that you have talked about. So I'm still not convinced why we're doing this, and then when I heard that there was a late-minute negotiation drop down to ten percent, just reinforces to me, this is a litigation motivation on how much we can garner with cities and counties to win a suit, to have more money for us. And so it seems that's outside of what we're invested in, that the money motivation is with the Trial Lawyers Association. And so I'm still not convinced that, I'm going to put my, my eggs are going to be in the Attorney General's basket.
Eric, on that point, are you still a part of the Attorney General's suit?
Well, yes. I mean, you know, I think there is a question regarding supporting the state or not, may have something to do with how the state decides to allocate money. If you've been in a lawsuit, you know, maybe you would get a little less because you were in a lawsuit than what you would otherwise. That was one of the factors we considered at the time. We'll stay with the state and share wholly in whatever the remedy is statewide, because that's what's in the best interest of the state. You know, I think conceptually, there's nothing wrong with any of that. It's, you know, Mr. Olafson is suggesting that these litigation damages here would be separate and a part of that, that very well may be. It's a little difficult to predict, honestly. Again, I think relative to the, you know, money change of society, or you're just angry, I mean, you know, this is about money, and I guess the question is just in hindsight, if you were to look back on it, which decision would you, in hindsight, wish you had done? It is a matter, I think, of protecting the city's interests. I think there is a reasonable likelihood this will receive a global settlement, and if we didn't start litigation, we'll still be a member of the class, we'll still be able to participate in that negotiation, and if there's a negotiation and it settles, there will be no lawsuit. I mean, there will be no, I mean, they won't actually try the lawsuit in court. So the value of initiating the lawsuit is really that because you're a litigating class member, there might be some value in getting a few more dollars than you would otherwise. But in the end, there will be, if there is a settlement that sort of nationwide, cover everything, just like the tobacco settlement occurred, there'll be money that comes down, whether it's through the state, through the county, or through the city. It's a little hard to predict exactly which is the best direction to go, because those are all unknowns, those things are yet to be determined. So it is just a matter of sort of protecting your interests by being involved in the lawsuit now, and then if you're involved in the lawsuit now, you need someone that has more understanding of the nationwide opioid litigation than I do, so we definitely need assistance. That helps.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thirty-five, request from the Transit Department for budget adjustment of the amount of two hundred and six thousand one oh one, bringing the bus wages of the operators in line with industry and local wages. Matt, to explain?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Well, it's no secret, in the Fargo-Moorhead area, unemployment is very low. That does provide some challenges when we are looking to our contractor to hire qualified drivers or individuals for operating our bus routes and our dispatch services at the ground transportation center. About a month ago, we had a few conversations with our contractor, which the general manager of First Transit and the region operations manager, Julie Selner, is also here, if you have any questions for them at any time. However, they were explaining to us that a lot of places in the Fargo-Moorhead area are increasing the starting wage of their positions from anywhere to fifteen to nineteen dollars an hour, just depending on what the work was, what type of work it was. Currently, our drivers start at fifteen-ten per hour. That's with the contract that we had negotiated with them back in 2015, and we are looking at doing an adjustment, a contract adjustment with them, to increase the starting pay to eighteen dollars per hour. There are quite a few reasons for that. If you think about it, fifteen-ten an hour is what we're hiring at right now. We are putting them behind the wheel of a vehicle that costs anywhere from five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to put on the street. They have up to eighty-nine passengers onboard at any given time. There's quite a bit of responsibility there, not to mention the extensive background checks that First Transit does for those employees. We're not just hiring any average person off the street and putting them behind the wheel. So we do need to be able to offer a competitive rate in the area to attract employees who are qualified to operate this service. So with talking with First Transit, they did put the numbers together, and that increase starting August first of this year would be two hundred and six, one hundred and one dollars. At present, First Transit is twenty-two drivers understaffed. That does include the ten routes that are coming into service the end of August for NDSU, which means there is a real chance that we will not have enough drivers to actually provide the transit service in the Fargo-Moorhead area if we don't make an adjustment to the wages and attract more qualified applicants. Pretty straightforward, questions?
Questions, commissioners?
Commissioner Garrick? Again, we're talking about adding to the budget outside the budget cycle, and for that alone, I'm about no. We've added a million dollars in the last three meetings that weren't foreseen for wages for new bus routes, now for driver pay, and we can't keep just adding to the budget without knowing how it's going to impact. It's going to be two hundred thousand plus dollars this first year, what about next year? These are all great in step, right? These are all going to increase in next year after that, whether it's COLOs or whatever else. So it might be two hundred and six thousand this year, what is it for the next year, the next five years? One thing we could do is end Link FM. You could find drivers there, right? That's a bus service that goes daily. End that, that's a hundred thousand dollars we save just off the bus, off the route there, and then we have drivers to do the other routes. So, I mean, if there's any motion to be made at all, it's to end Link FM, I think, you know, that's the motion I'm going to make.
Well, and to your point, Mr. Garrick, or Commissioner Garrick, you're right, we don't know what the costs are, and that's why the Transit Department has submitted a proposal to the budget team for the last two years to bring dispatch in-house, because there we do actually know what those costs would be. Whenever we hire that or contract that out, they're not our employees, and so we don't know what that's going to be, and that's what causes some of these mid-year adjustments. It's an unfortunate reality. I understand this is a very large ask. We wouldn't be here if we didn't, if we weren't seriously concerned about being able to operate the service this fall.
I'm not mad at you for bringing it forward, I'm mad at, I am miffed at this commission for allowing these kind of asks to come forward and entertain them, because we can't keep adding to the budget without knowing what the impact is. We have to know, if anyone comes to us, we have to say, what's the impact, not only this year, five years, ten years, right? Okay, what's the fix other than just adding more dollars? Well, we could cut Link FM. Boom. I mean, there's ways to do this. I understand what you're asking for, this is your job to ask for those dollars. I think it's up to us now to say, no, I can get those dollars, find it somewhere else. I make a motion to cut the Link FM.
Make a motion to what?
Cut the Link FM. Cut the Link FM.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I have another motion.
I have a question. I'm sorry, did you mention, what's the attrition rate?
Twenty-two. You're 22 down now, right, Matt?
Yeah, 22 down right now. It's been pretty high. In speaking with Julie and, if you can come up if you want, in speaking with Julie and Joseph, the general manager, what they're telling us is they're interviewing several candidates. They were actually out at Red River Valley Fair this year, trying to get people interested in the position. And they're just flat-out telling them in the interview that I can get a higher-paying job somewhere else. Are you guys doing like almost 40% in turnover?
We're higher than 40% turnover, much higher than 40% turnover. Quite honestly, I believe we're closer to 57%. Since the beginning of May to today, to the end of last week, when we participated in the City of Fargo's fair, the Red River Valley Fair, we have only been able to get four people into revenue service, revenue service. That, it's incredibly hard out there right now. Your, the starting wage for a CDL driver at this time, if you call around, all companies are hiring CDL drivers, is anywhere from $15 to $22 an hour starting wage. Ours is $15.10. So we're the low guys on that scale. When we're advertising, even though we're offering a $2,500 sign-on bonus, hiring bonuses, retention bonuses, we also include a longevity bonus. When we add all that in there, even with a full benefit package that we offer, we are not able to say, to have people commit to employment with us, because they are receiving offers at a much higher rate than what we are able to offer. Now, I know $3 an hour seems like an awful lot to ask for an increase for starting wage. If you recall, it was only a year ago, both the City of Fargo and First Transit came up here and needed to request that we raise this from 13-something an hour to the $15.10 starting wage. When that was approved, we only did that with the new hires, only the people that we're currently hiring, and anybody that was below that $15.10 to bring them up to that mark. We're not even able to retain those people, because they can simply come in, go through our training, receive their CDL, and go out and start at $20, $21 an hour at any other company in the area. And as soon as oil prices rise, there goes our team. We're having an incredibly hard time maintaining and recruitment of employees.
I would also like to add, if I could, First Transit is almost in direct competition with City of Fargo. Right now, City of Fargo does require, if your job requires a CDL, you would start at a grade eight, which is starting at $19.13 per hour. So when those employees do come in who may not have a CDL, First Transit does the training, pays out all of that money. And then if a job comes open within the city, they are able to apply for that or other jobs in the area. And then they can go and work for them, because now they have their CDL. And so that cost does come back to us indirectly every year as we renew that contract.
So we do have classrooms. We are training people. People are receiving their CDLs, but they are not retaining employment with us at that rate of pay.
Commissioner Grinberg?
I also like to mention that part of this wage increase is to bring our senior people along with it. They went last year with no increase. We need to be able to bring them along, too. And what that's going to do is hiring paying person, the people that have been there for 22, 23 years, are only going to be at 22. So it's these, even though it seems like an awful lot of money, when you think that you have 89 full-time employees, in order to hit that service, we need 89 full-time, 20 part-time, in order to maintain semester service. And we've only been able to put four people into service since the beginning of May.
Thank you.
Now, we did very well from January to March.
Well, I'm not going to ask the questions I was going to ask. I'm just going to make a statement that, you know, Commissioner Gary is not off-base on this and his points. We better get a handle on this with our budgeting process, because I don't want to see other departments coming in mid-year, next year, having the same issue. We better get our act together on budgeting and planning for this, from HR to finance, because this is, it just needs to be managed better. That's my statement.
Agreed. And we did provide an updated budget request to Mr. Costin for the 2020 year as well with this. So that was included in this one, but our contract does end at the end of next year.
We have a motion.
I make the recommended motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Gary?
Grinberg? Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 36, contract amendments for Ground Transportation Center GTC remodel project. Approval deck concept C with option re-evaluate, option B for a future date. Approval of $725,000 for needed repair costs to support a remodel. Acknowledgement of continued commitment to maintain the GTC structure in a state of good repair through deferred maintenance schedule. Julie Bubelman, or no? Somebody else?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Casey Mc names with KLJ, the project manager for the GTC projects. I'm going to walk through just a quick overview of what we're, you know, where we started in 2000, January 2018, with the completion of the planning study that we did, and where we are today after doing some preliminary engineering. So we looked at the system needs in the 2019 feasibility study, and these are the key items that we got out of that study, that we needed to plan for at least 20-year growth period. We needed to improve safety for vehicles and passengers on the site, and we need to improve and better utilize the space that is there at the GTC. Part of that was to reconfigure the exterior parking layout for the buses. Right now, they back up. So what we had approved in the January 2019 study was deck concept B, which you see on the left. And the biggest difference between that and what you see on the right is the fact that we had accounted for that 20-year planning projection with expansion to the parking facility, the Fourth Street parking on the south side of the GTC. So after discussions with city staff, we realized it wasn't feasible to expand onto the south lot. So we're currently proposing concept C, which utilizes the existing site that we have now. And that should get us at least 10 years into the future with the growth planning. And the other thing that we've done recently during the preliminary engineering phases is we've communicated with engineering to look at what the potential impacts to mat bus operations would be along NP Avenue, which is what you see in both of these figures as well at the top of the page in pink. Another piece of the study that, or current project that has been completed is a structural assessment for the site. As you can see from these photos here, it was quite an intrusive assessment. We actually did some exploratory construction for the site. What that allowed us to do in comparison to prior studies was really look at the inner workings of the structure and make sure that everything was where we expected it to be, to be able to actually move forward with any projects on the site. What we found with that structural assessment, in addition to some of the other things that had already been presented or brought forth in the other studies, was there were some debonding and cracks to the structural, or the concrete overlay that protects the structural slab, as well as what you see on the picture in the right there. That's actually a post-tension tendon that has broken through the concrete parking garage deck. So that, what you see of the spaghetti strands there, that shouldn't be that. That should be a nice, tight cable system. So it's actually popped through the bottom of the deck. But fortunately, that's just an isolated incident. So we're looking to repair, repair that. Overall, the structural assessment found that the structure itself is in good condition. Again, it's in general concurrence with the other studies that hadn't been completed. And they also presented a list of deferred maintenance items that go along with the existing capital improvement plan presented by Transit. As we were presenting the information of the structural assessment study, two city staff, buildings and grounds brought to our attention some other items that weren't currently included in our project, that they would like to see potentially included. The first three things you see here for the transit items are additional improvements to the transit facility itself, which are primarily related to the HVA systems that have been aging. In addition, once again, we would repair that concrete overlay, and we would repair that broken tendon. Below ground in the parking structure itself, again, these items were brought forth by the Buildings and Grounds crew to potentially look at and integrate into the existing project would be elevator, finer sprinkler systems, HVAC systems, CO2 systems, as well as emergency lighting. So what does that mean for the overall project costs that have already been approved? As you can see on the screen here, the transit cost summary, because we are proposing to modify the extent of the deck reconfiguration, that's a $400,000 cost savings to the project, which leaves a net cost to transit of $9,500 for the parking side of it or the planning. If you look at integrating those items into the project, it would be approximately $315,500. Project schedule, just kind of an update here, we are looking to bid the GTC renovations in November of 2019, and then have that project constructed and complete in August of 2020. With the parking garage, we would bid in February of 2020, and then complete that in September of 2020. So all, overall, what we're looking for today is just overall concurrence on, that we move forward with an alternate deck layout, which is concept C, which is less intrusive to the existing site. But we would also like to leave the opportunity open to revisit down the road when those 20-year projections start to come into play, that we could potentially expand onto the Fourth Street lot and improve, or overall approve the total project cost of $325,000. And then just acknowledgement that we're going to continue to support the existing infrastructure through that deferred maintenance schedule.
So we have $725,000 here. That's not accurate, or you're saying it's paid for?
It is, but what you see here is there's a $400,000 credit to that 725. It's a total additional cost of $725,000 minus the $400,000 credit from not doing the extensive deck renovations. So there's a net there.
And isn't there a transit grant as well involved here?
There is.
Mike looks.
Mayor and Commissioners, I thought I'd talk just briefly on the financing. And thank you to KLJ and to Casey for all the good work that's gone into the study process, both the end of 2018 as well as into 2019. There is an ND DOT grant that is passed through federal money that is funding the transit portion of the project. And so we will now, with these construction documents that will be prepared by KLJ, go and look for further cost refinements, try to find that additional $9,500. On the parking side, we have some additional work to do there. We also will continue the conversations internally about financing those improvements. The commission this evening is simply receiving and filing this report and this opinion of cost. We also need to look at those sources of revenue, including the C-1 TIF district, to figure out what's going to be available, and then what other work has already perhaps been designed or contemplated in years past, and reconcile that to KLJ's opinion of cost and summary. And then come back to the commission, per Casey's schedule that was just one slide before, and talk about this in 2020 on the parking side. So this, these will be budget impacts in '20. These will not be impacting our '19 budget as it is today. So on the GTC remodel, we will be back on the transit side, though, with a bid award, hopefully by November, after we come back and talk about getting underway here in '20. So just wanted to provide that additional budget clarification on behalf of the team.
So there's no motion needed tonight. Just accepting it, and we'll go out for bid as planned?
So we would take a resolution. Julie's provided in a cover memo, a support for concept C, as outlined by Casey. This is really a cost-saving measure for us, allows us to stay within the footprint of the Ground Transportation Center today. And then what we're also going to do is come back, after preparation of construction documents and bid specifications from KLJ, come back and brief the commission. So that's the requested motion this evening. And then the additional one on the bottom, which is just that we're going to continue to operate the GTC in a state of good repair. That's just boilerplate language for the federal government, and something that's standard in federal highway and in DOT. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'd so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with a request.
Commissioner Grinberg?
I need a refresher and a simple Excel spreadsheet that shows what we talked about with this project a year ago with the TIF and using those dollars and how we're going to pay for it. This is all great information. I can't connect the dots. I just, it's a simple spreadsheet that says, here's what we originally intended, here's the cost, here's the credits, here's where we're going, and then here's how we're going to pay for it.
And Commissioners, to your point, that's exactly what we're going to work on internally with the finance team. But we had a good discussion this morning just about doing just that, and creating that illustration for the commission. Because there are some reach back into the 2018 budget and the 2018 study, we really need to do that to refresh the effort today as we get ready for bids this fall. That's a very good work product, and something that we'll be happy to prepare.
Commissioner Gary?
So because words matter, it says approve the net additional project cost. Does that mean that we're placing it in the budget now?
No, you will not be placing it in the budget now. You're really receiving and filing the opinion of cost. And so that is a number that has been developed as an engineer's estimate. And so I would just suggest, as a friendly amendment, that that would just be that you're receiving and filing the opinion of cost. You are not approving or authorizing any expenditure of funds at this time. That is a later approval by the commission later in the fall.
As long as that's part of the record, then I'll be okay with that. But when I see approval of the net, then, okay, I'll make that suggested amendment then.
So you're making a suggested amendment?
Yep. It says, what he just said, this is an acceptance of the cost estimate, and it's not obligating us to put this into the budget the way it sits. Because right now it says approve the net additional. That means to me, we're putting it in the budget.
This is not the award of bids. Those will be prepared and then brought back to the commission for consideration, so.
Is there a second to his amendment?
Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment?
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Are we ready to vote on the amendment, or the motion? Roll call, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Strand had asked, have a discussion of item three, which was direct proposals received on Park East property. Jim Gilmore to explain.
In February, you authorized us to request proposals for the development of this parcel kind of remnant of the Park East apartment property. At that time, we were really uncertain whether or not there could be access to Main Avenue. Simply didn't know, and I had communicated that to a lot of the prospective proposals. Further discussion with engineering, there's a meeting there, but it seemed like a write-in, write-out would be acceptable. Normally, that's, it makes it difficult to make, you can't make a left turn, but with the roundabout further to the west, you could certainly use a roundabout if you were ultimately going to a destination to the west. We did receive three proposals. I know Commissioner Grinberg had some concern about the process. And because of that concern on the process, and the fact we were uncertain on the access to Main Avenue, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to decline to accept the three proposals for the Park East property. What we would do next is probably look at a different RFP and bring that back to you before we would issue any additional RFPs. So the request and motion is to simply decline the three proposals that we received.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Part of why I wanted us to bring this out of consent and simply discuss it was, we haven't had much discussion about it. These proposals that came forward weren't even seen by our commission. I believe, Commissioner Grinberg, you had Planning Commission review them?
Yes.
Right after, so we go public, we ask for proposals. One committee has seen it. We haven't seen it. I have a few concerns. I'm not so sure that we, whether or not we jumped the gun. I'm concerned about the integrity of the proposals that people have given us, whether we've given them, you know, whether they will change, or whether we've given them a fair, fair, fair vetting. I'm concerned about what our needs are. What did we try to accomplish when we asked for these proposals? Was it housing? Was it commercial development? Was it mixed use? Was it tax revenue? You know, I know we're being told now that all three proposals simply offered the dollar amount that we valued it at. I don't know that we should be surprised by that, but what I don't know is how much were they going to invest? What were they going to bring to the community? So I'm hesitant. I wish we hadn't gone forward and asked for the proposals, simply put, because here we are. We've got people who've invested in them. Now they've shown their cards. Now others will see what they've all advanced. And I'm still not sure we know where we're going for that parcel of land, relative to the big picture. So that's the reason I wanted this brought forward, was to simply acknowledge that, you know, we're in this process, but I'm not, I don't know when I'd be ready to come forward and RFP till I know what the goals are. What is it we want to accomplish? And I don't know who decides that. Is it planning? Is it community development? Is it whom? You know, so I'm okay with this notion, but if I were one of those folks that put in a proposal, I wouldn't have been happy with this approach. in a proposal, I wouldn't have been happy with this, this approach. Commissioner Strand, a couple of things happened when the RFP went out. As number one, we didn't know we could access from Main, which makes a tremendous difference. So, we didn't have maybe as much market interest in it as we thought. Number two, the high-rise announced by the Housing Authority that they may tear the high-rise down. So, Commissioner Grinberg requested, we might want to look at this whole package because it may be the high-rise plus this parcel of land, you might get a different proposal. It was felt then that it was kind of not a fair proposal at that point. To your point, exactly is what needs to happen. Let's define what we want in the RFP, define what people want to have done there. And I think you had a variance, Commissioner Grinberg, if some people wanted us to give them the land or value the land, there's a variety of different options that were given of the three options we had. But I think, correct, Commissioner Strand, we need to define what we want, what we're thinking about, and what we need to go in there. And I think planning and the community development can do that, and then we could bring a project forward. We still, on the high-rise, that's still in the decision-making format because it's looking for federal money to help out on that. So, we'll have more clarity in the next three to four months. And you're exactly right, let's look at it once it's done. Right now, construction's going on in the area, it'd be difficult to stage another project in there. Perhaps through the fall, we could go through that and try to come up with some answers. But I would expect you to work with the commissioners, come in, just planning to figure out what to do, if that's fair. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Mahoney. Aye.
Yes. Brenda Daring has an update on construction and construction projects. We're really excited because we're making some progress throughout the town, but it is sometimes slow to get across certain places.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try and make this quick and brief. I wanted to give you a quick update. Of course, every Monday, the Forum does an amazing job updating all of our projects also, so that the general public can see what's happening around town. So, they've really helped us on getting that information out. Some of the things, though, that we've kind of seen this year as we've gone through our construction update is, we did have a couple of weeks where we had a cement shortage here in town, and it, it hasn't impacted the, the end construction time, but it did adjust some of their paving, paving schedules. We've also had some large rainfall events, and what we've seen on the impacts from those are mostly more weekend work. So, we've seen some, a lot of Saturday work, and then even we've done some Sunday work when they don't require an inspector on-site. In the last couple of weeks, we have had one incident, one safety incident, where a contractor employee was injured and was in need of some stitches to take care of that injury. So, I wanted to go through some of the areas we have that help out with the construction. We have our Twitter account, our Facebook account at FargoStreets.com, along with FargoStreets.com. And what I wanted to do is, let's see if this works, I wanted to take you to our interactive map to do our update, so that the public can see what's out there to look at the projects. So, for instance, this is 52nd Avenue, and so, you can look at what's being constructed this time, what's open. And then, you can also click on it, and this will also be able to take you to more detailed project information. And so, from there, you can actually look at a more detailed page also. And so, we work very diligently to keep that up-to-date. And so, that's kind of an idea of where all of our projects are. So, right now, we're working on 52nd Avenue. We also have, there's a link for the Southwest Metro to combine with the West Fargo, to try and keep all of those citizens, the West Fargo, Fargo, and Horace citizens, as up-to-date on what is open and how to get into town and where we're at. And then, a lot of these other projects are mostly mill and overlay projects, where we're doing curb and gutter replacement, spot curb and gutter replacement, and then we do an edge mill and an overlay. On 23rd Avenue, we're working on that intersection right now. That road will be the North Access and the Border States Electric Site. And then, we're also doing some spot repairs along 42nd Street. So, you can see the work that we're getting done here downtown. We've got the Main Avenue work also. Do I have any, before I move on, any questions? Okay. Quick move forward. So, a couple of other things, I just, I wanted to kind of, we do construction, but there's a lot more we do down there. We also are working on a process right now with the redevelopment downtown. We're working on some right-of-way permitting because we are getting, our right-of-ways being very impacted by just building construction with the zero setback. So, we're trying to assist the public with that. And then, we're also getting word that we should have our first small cell deployment this fall. We are still meeting with Verizon and AT&amp;T, and you will be seeing some new updates on the policy and guidelines. But it sounds like for another company, their poles will be delivered this fall. So, we'll start seeing that installation. And then, also, just to give you a quick update on some of the studies, we're working with Metro Cogon. We've got the 17th Avenue Bike Gap, South Safe Routes to School. We also have a Northwest Metro Transportation Plan and a Long Range Transportation Plan. Currently, we're working on the design on the second phase of Main Avenue from Broadway